Okay, hello family, I'mma wait on you guys to get in here cuz I'm seeing that um (sigh) my notification just came through family. So I'mma give you guys some time to get in here. For shadow work sessions today, today is August the 7th. Um yeah, August the 7th. Um and we got a lot to, well, not that much to talk about, but I definitely gonna talk stroll into talking about um spiritual warfare, right? So we're gonna discuss that family. Um, the first thing I want us to breeze over is shadow work, right? And kind of talk about the aspect of us doing shadow work and why we do our shadow work and why we're here is shadow work sessions as well as um I put out shadow work prompts and how to even start your shadow work and to start focusing on doing your shadow work for all signs, I did that on the channel, so if you haven't went over to All In The Cards um to look at your zodiac sign and to actually look, work through the information that's there, I suggest that you please go do that, okay? That's one thing I did in reference of you guys. Um because you know, you guys get shadow work sessions, so it was somebody, I think it was in Miss T Live and they were asking about shadow work, so and I wasn't there, I was watching the replay. Hey sis, hey, 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 I'm glad you guys are here. And so um I was watching the replay and on that replay, somebody asked about shadow work, so I was like, okay, I need to do some some more work on shadow work for the big channel for you two cuz not everybody gets to do shadow work sessions with us over here. So I did put um, hey Miss T, hey, 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 I'm glad you were able to make it. Um, I'm actually not in my spiritual space family, I'm not at my desk or anything, I'm actually in my bed, in my room, right? Chillaxing, um but I was doing some shadow work, you know what I'm saying? Because um it's been a long day, it's been a long day. Um but mind you, things are gonna happen, right? So, we're gonna talk about that tonight and we're gonna deep dive in a little bit. Um and I'm not to say that this is something that hasn't already happened before to me and probably to you. Um many times, right, where we know um and we recognize spiritual attacks and things like that coming at us. Now, we also have to um think about like spiritual battles, right? Um and it's like fighting for your life, right? Just it's just as well as spiritual battles, um I'm sorry, as regular as you know, regular battle with somebody else or another evil force or negative energy and so forth, so I wanna kind of talk about that tonight, family, in a, in a whole, right? So I won't be on here that long tonight because my day has, has had me like drained energy wise, that's why I haven't done um pretty much any readings outside of the ones that I told you about for the shadow work. And um I, I pulled back in reference of doing any um other energy work today, family, because I need to recharge, you know what I'm saying? Sometimes I gotta recharge, you know? And um and I need to take me a spiritual bath tonight, so I'm definitely gonna do that cuz every time I start feeling like this and I feeling like is negativity coming all which ways towards me, I know to get in some water, okay? So that's another thing I want you guys to know too is to do that, that's one of the remedies. And I'mma give you guys a couple of other things that I know to do as well that I'm gonna be doing tonight. Um of course, I always keep my Florida water near me, right? So um and my other sacred space sprays and stuff and I sprayed my, my car down and things like that today. But to just go back to the basics in reference of those that are new here and may, cuz I got some new people over here as well on Patreon and they may see this afterwards and not know what shadow work is, so shadow work is us going through and reflecting on our subconscious, the, the hidden things, the things that are um not always shown, right? Um and sometimes uh looked at as your weakness, right? Um and these are things that are suppressed, right? So um and we dig them back up and we work through it, right? But not only that, in shadow work sessions, I kind of push that narrative as well cuz we do get into and we went through many, many episodes over here of shadow work sessions where we deep dive, but we also, I'm glad you got your package, love, I'm glad you got your package, I say. But um, but not only that, family, um we we, we, we have to deep dive on the things that's happening in our day to day life, week to week, right? So therefore, whenever I am putting out a shadow work session and I have a specific topic, that week is probably, you know, it could be, it could be something that resonates with you right then, you know what I'm saying? But I try to cover all bases, outside of on the big channel, I have many of shadow work videos that you can watch over there under the playlist as well for different topics, grief, stress, um trauma bond, um all kinds of things over there, okay? So don't forget, if you're new here, you can go over there as well and catch it. But here, if you go back on Patreon, I have a list and I gotta make a playlist of all the shadow work sessions cuz like, I think Tashla's had asked me about a shadow work session video and I had to go back and find it for her. But if I put them all together, then y'all can have one place to go back to it, so I'mma do that, I'll probably do that maybe tonight. But so, family, I wanted to just chit chat about um some of the things, right? To work through the issues that, you know, can mess with our psyche a little bit, right? Because that's what it is, you know what I'm saying? When you're going through and you know that you're being physically, not physically, but spiritually going through some type of attack or warfare that you feel, right? It's here, because the whole thing is mind control, family, remember the first universal law is this all mental, so that's the thing, right? So it's like that, um I was just looking at this um, I was just looking at this um screenshot that I had in my phone and I'm gonna post this, but they always say like when life gives you lemons, analyze where they came from, right? But they say, take those lemons and make lemonade. But I say, with shadow work sessions, analyze where those lemons came from, right? So why you being given those lemons and why is it happening in reference of you, you know, receiving lemons right now, right? So let's analyze that, so in, in, in in all in all of uh shadow work, why do we do it? Because, you know, for those who are new here, we do it to understand past trauma, also to identify and overcome limiting beliefs um and expanding our, our consciousness as well, okay? So we have to do these things, family. Okay, so let's get into um some things about spiritual warfare, right? So that's what I really wanted to talk about today. Um I was talking to my girlfriend about it because um I was like, how do you truly know that you feel like, you know, you, you truly are going through spiritual warfare? Well, you would know, period, because as someone who was on a spiritual journey and as a chosen one, as you know, that's the words that they always use out here, um and you having a strong connection to source and your light is bright and your vibrations are right, are, are high and they're rising, right? And you're shining, then you know what's gonna attract to that, right? So then you start experiencing things, you start experiencing problems and um situations happening out in the blue and then you start feeling like, oh, it's always something, right? You, that's probably one of the main things you always say, it's always something. That's because you are the light that attracts the dark, you see? So it's basically um spiritual warfare always goes on as long as there's earthly sins and battles within, right? So we have to understand that it's, it's the key to learning to protect ourselves in reference of these spiritual attacks. That's the thing, we gotta make sure we wear our towels, man, right? I had mine's on today, right? And I felt protected by that and then the other part of that is meditation, right? And be it, and try to meditate daily if you can. Hey T, hey Tashla's, yeah, um I was just talking about how um when you came on sis, before you came on, I was just talking about how I'mma make a playlist of shadow work sessions on this platform, you know, so cuz I remember I was trying to find the Feng Shui, I think it was, that we did, yeah, so. Um but yeah, I'mma make a playlist over here, sis. But um, so we're talking about spiritual warfare and the battle um that we go through daily um just to, you know, fight off evil forces, to fight away the earthly sins, to fight away temptation, the battle of um things coming at us, you know, the day to day, um the things that may happen towards us and trying to find and, and trying to find the source, right? Or try to recognize the source of the situation, but also being able to protect ourselves. So that's really what I wanted to talk about because today it highlighted that in my life. And I knew what it was, you know what I'm saying? I could tell, although people say, oh, mercury retrograde and things like that. I don't look at it as that, I look at it as I'm a spiritual being and I'm gonna always get attacked by the darkness, right? Because I am that shining light, right? And so being that shining light, what is, what is the duality of that, right? So we always gotta remember that and that should be the first thing that comes to mind. But then the other part of that is your mind is what they wanna take, right? Or they wanna get to you through, right? Is your mind, your mental, so just be conscious, right? And I was reading up on some things, family, I, I um wrote some things down about it because y'all know how I am. I'll get the writing, I'll get the um trying to figure out exactly how I'm feeling and why I'm feeling like today, I told the spiritual family else how to early, it's like, I don't feel, I feel off, you know what I'm saying? Today was an off day for me, um I could feel the anxiety, I could feel the depression coming in, silking in, I could feel it, you know what I'm saying? Um, yes, I say, retro is the time to tap in and take your power back, but they don't tell you that, right, Miss T? That's right, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, and so I could tell, it seems like with, and you know what, you right, because with the retrograde, I always say those, that's the time to do the reads, right? To like you said, take that, um to reassess and take our power back and so forth, right? And it's like, that's, that's basically what's happening, it's like someone tried to take my power, you know what I'm saying? But I still, I, I had to stand teentoes down, family, but I had to remember and stay in integrity. See, that's the hard part, you see what I'm saying? Instead of flipping the hell out and losing it all, you know what I'm saying? And then fall, cuz they wanna take you back, right? So today, I um, I exerted all of my learning of things today, family. And I'mma tell you, this is as if, like I said, the cho- chosen ones and the ones that are walking in your divine light, you gonna have the most battles, you gonna have the most spiritual warfare to walk through, you understand? Because it's gonna be the hardest test for you to stay on the right track, you see? So um and it's just the same, right? What we always say about the truth talkers and all this stuff, those are the main people that are gonna be tested and you gonna be tested just as much, yes. They tell you, don't tap in because they're telling us things in reverse, right? Mm-hmm, it's always the opposite, that's right, Miss T, that's right. Yes, always the opposite, right? As they, that's the duality and everything as well, even with the spiritual warfare that you're going through, what do you say to that? Like of spiritual warfare or spiritual battle, or if you feel like it's um, you know, it's a lot of things coming at you, how do y'all work, how do y'all handle that, you know what I'm saying? You know, do you, like me, I told you guys, I'mma do, I'mma use my Psalms tonight, family. I'mma pull out my Zohar tonight, I'mma read over that, I'mma read a few Psalms and I'mma give y'all a few of those Psalms that I read tonight. I'mma get in some water, I'mma take my spiritual bath, right? Um, you know, we fight, right? Fight spiritually in reference of the things that are coming, coming up against us because one thing's for sure, two things for certain, it's not that you're not gonna have things come up against you cuz you will, right? But it's how you respond to the situation, see? Because one thing that they try to kiss you, right, is your mind, I had to stop and think, I was like, wait, I've been doing good, you know what I'm saying? I've been doing good, I ain't bothering nobody, but look, contract gone, right? Now some stuff going on with, you know, different things that I'm trying to do. And it's like, all of these things could take somebody's mind if they not strong, see? To show you how strong you ha- you have to be and plus strong mentally as well as strong physically to be able to not allow yourself to respond to those evil things and the negativity that's coming at you, even if there's somebody in your face, you see? So practice what you preach is what the ancestors said to me in my ear, right? So I stopped and I knew then that I was being tested, right? And so you walk through it and you know what I said, ancestors, fix it. I said it just like that, ancestors, fix it, and guess what? It was fixed, just like that, you hear what I'm saying? Just like that, it was fixed, right? Just by me speaking it, ancestors, fix it. Ancestors fixed it in an hour, done, you see? But that's because I knew I was being tested and I knew to hold things down. Although I, I was feeling it, family, but I knew, I said, I knew I said it in my mind, I said, this is a test and I said, ancestors, fix it. Everything lined up the way it was supposed to be, you see? But all in all, I knew, yes, it's just a test, yes, it's just a test, right? But all in all, I knew, but that's that spiritual um battle within your mind. Because you, sometimes it's like you don't have the time to think, you know what I'm saying? Think things through and then you just react, right? So it's about me stepping back, I had to step back and realize and stand and think first, right? Instead of speaking something out, so that's something we got to learn, cuz I know I'm big on that. I, before I just pop off, I didn't care, say whatever have I felt and hey, I'm Eldra, and just go on about life, you know what I'm saying? And probably be a, um you know, messed it up for whatever was to play out, you see what I'm saying? Cuz sometimes we can ruin things based off of this, the things that you speak or the, the way that you come off, your delivery, your um, you know, and that takes time too, you know? This didn't happen overnight, it takes time, but I'mma tell you what, you gonna have a lot of things that's gonna test you when you doing the right thing, cuz see, when you walking in that divine light, what you think is gonna come towards light is that darkness, family? So what I wanted to bring to you guys today is, what is it that you feel that you, you've been tested with lately? And have, how have you been um handling that? Do you feel that it's been some form of um spiritual warfare that you going through? I feel like everybody's in a spiritual warfare right now, actually, because of the climate, the planetary alignments. I feel like everything is being challenged right now and not only being challenged, especially those that are chosen and especially those that have that spiritual connection, especially to source, right? And you meditating, doing everything you gotta do, right? That's something that they, that the evil forces don't want, so they're gonna definitely come after you, but you gotta be strong, family. You gotta be strong because this is gonna happen to you, okay? Um, what you say, Eldra, yes, you are correct, yes, it's been a lot of challenges, yes, see what I'm saying? Mm-hmm, and that's because powerful being like yourself, you know what I'm saying? It's gonna keep coming, it's gonna keep coming, you gotta keep fighting, you know what I'm saying? Eldra, you got straight, fa- finally, okay? Sis, take your time and get well, yeah, yeah. I feel like I've been upgraded, that's good, yeah. I feel like that too, but with ascension comes tension. Every time, have you noticed that? With the ascension comes the tension, so yeah, I definitely feel like I got upgraded spiritually, you know, and my spiritual gifts, how I connect is stronger, I can hear clearer, but with that comes that evil too, that's gonna try to attack, right? That's that ascension tension is what I call it. So not only have we ascended, okay? We're gonna receive some, something's gonna attack, right? Cuz they don't want us to, to, to upgrade or to ascend, but that's the only way we're going, right? So it's all good, I believe I have to, especially if you're trying to do right, yes. If once, I'm telling you, family, it's gonna happen. Like if you, if you feel like, no, everything's going fine, I don't have anything happening, I don't have any task, huh? Hmm, please, you must not be on that journey, you must not be tapping in, cuz if you tapping in, you gonna, you gonna feel it, okay? You gonna feel it, putting in that work and ancestors taking care of everything, I'm still amazed, yes. I was, I, that's how I felt, that's how I feel, you know what I'm saying? But um, and, and, and it's still being taken care of, so you right, we still get taken care of cuz like I told you, it happened in an hour, you know what I'm saying? Fixed, everything done, you know, I was come on home and deal what I had to do. But in the midst of it, I'm saying, you gonna still feel some things, you gonna still go through some things, you know what I'm saying? Regardless of the ancestors fixing it and everything, you know? So yeah, especially when you finally tell them no, yeah. But see, this wasn't even a situation where I was having to deal with, this was like a system glitch, a system glitch, family. Yo, a system glitch, right? And then, then they try to tell you that the system may glitch and then find it. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, not even no person, this is, this is uh man against machine. That's the best way to put it, man against machine, honey, okay? I had to go fight a man against a machine, okay? Cuz you know, this is nowadays, if you, if they feel like everything is, is right when it comes to computer, but what they don't realize that's, that's the major mistakes, they make major mistakes, you know? The computer do, I work with them all day, every day, I know. Yeah, ancestors got me ready for the okey dokey, I say, we getting it in. That might be the energy I'm feeling or something, maybe it's like the force and the power, cuz the force and the power, I'mma put in between that, that's coming. I'm ready to put some okey dokeys on some things, okay? For real, this is my child, please, yes, okey dokey. Get y'all energy up, family ritual, eh, I know, eat good these next couple of days and get the mental, I'm, I'm drinking my smoothie, so you know I'm doing the right thing, that's coconut, um coconut milk, strawberries, bananas and um I'm making me a salad for dinner, so I'm doing the right thing, I'm eating light. Um today, all I had was, um I did have a jerk chicken patty for uh lunch, but that was it, I didn't have nothing else. Um and the only reason I had that is because um I bought them jerk chicken patties from Target and I stack them up in, in the refrigerator, cuz you know, there's something I could just put in the microwave, like um, you know, and reheat them and stuff like that, so yeah. Now, all my energy for Esgrason, yes, we gonna do him in, honey, do him in, okay? Yes, you been having some weird dreams, okay? Yeah, cuz see, those weird dreams also, because you know, spiritual attacks can come through dreams, cuz I know I had some when I was in that house, my other house. Honey, I was in there dreaming about snakes, dreaming about things biting me, I remember I woke up one night, it was like I could physically feel something bite me. Like bit me, family, that's, that was something, okay? That was something, you know what I'm saying? I've, and at that point, I went in, I went in, okay? Cuz I was like, okay, somebody either sent something to me or either this is some negative vibes coming through, honey, I had to do my work, okay? Do that juju, okay? Yes, get it in, right? Mm-hmm, yes, lately I haven't had an appetite, okay? See, lately I haven't been able to sleep that well, so I haven't been sleeping, I've been up, 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 up. Except for last night, honey, I, I, I must've been real tired, you know, cuz I slept last night, but you know, I haven't been, hey AJ, oh, you was cooking, well, I'm glad, I hope you received your items and I hope you are doing well, AJ. Um, I haven't been eating right because all the foods doesn't taste good at all, mm. How you been feeling, sis? Everything been okay? Um, okay, well, do, I've been eating poorly since moving, yeah. A lot of us have, you know, we were on that situation of just eating poorly, right? Um but again, you know, this also can affect, like Miss T was saying, it can affect our spiritual things that we are to do, you know what I'm saying? Like our strength and stuff, so we gotta get our, we gotta get our strength back up, family, especially in reference of doing this ritual and um, you know, trying to defeat these, these um evil forces, right? Cuz not only are they coming for us, family, but they coming for other people, especially our family, our friends, you know? Because I hear it from them too and it's like, we gotta help them battle as well, not just us fighting our own battles. Hey, hey, I'm Lily, um I can't eat if I wanted to, family, I know, I know, but you know, that might be a good thing. Oh, okay, good, sis, I'm glad to hear that, I'm glad to hear that. The foods don't taste like it used to back in the day, right? Now that's part is true, that's true, it don't taste like that, it don't, yeah, right, yeah. So um, so yes, family, but I definitely just wanted to, you know, chit chat with you guys and talk about and bring to your um, bring to your um, bring to the collective rather, um about spiritual warfare, spiritual blockages and um spiritual battles, right? And the, and how to protect ourselves in the midst of those things, right? It definitely prayer and meditation, but also pull out them Psalms, family, right? Pull out them Psalms, pray for the activation of um spirit, you know what I'm saying? Um, okay, so let's, let's, let me talk to you guys about some of the Psalms that I use. Um Psalms, I, I like to use Psalms 70, Psalms 91, Psalms 71, um Psalms 82 and Psalms 55, okay? In reference of fighting against um when you're in a spiritual battle, okay? So those are just a few of the ones that I use out of my power of Psalms, okay? Um but you can write them down, I have many, many more, um always, you know, you can do the black candle, do your prayer over that, you know, write underneath, um I mean, write things down, use your bamboo paper, brown paper, you know, we went through these things, family, on how to combat and to fight these negative forces that come at us, but what I want you to understand is that they just don't, they don't stop, right? Especially when you vibrating high, that's when they gonna start coming more and more and more, right? And you could feel yourself vibrating, you know, higher, right? You know when things are changing within your aura and your energy, family, you should be able to recognize that by now, right? So when that is happening, you, you feel it, then, then the external feels it too, what's around you feels it, okay? So not only that, that's definitely gonna be like, oh, it's like an alarm, you know what I'm saying? You stand out like a light bulb, right? You know, like it have like the halo, that's how it is, right? So I just want you guys to understand that, know that um it's okay though, continue to be that light, continue to shine bright, continue to raise your vibration, like Miss T said, eat right, drink right, continue to stay on your divine, you know, your divine path, right? Connect to the ancestors, because let me tell you something, let's say if I was going through all of that stuff um that people talk about and even like today when I was tested or whatever, just suppose I wasn't connected to my ancestors, I would've been in trouble, honey, in trouble, okay? But whenever I'm, I know I'm in trouble, I holler for my ancestors, okay? And they stand up strong in an hour, family, sometimes even shorter than that, but the day was out. Fixed, you hear me? Fixed, so I say that to say and I bring all of this to you guys so you understand that your connection to spirit, family, to ancestors and to the most high is gonna definitely be able to walk you through any storm, you understand me? In any battle, any war, right? Cuz they'd be ready to go to war for you, right? So I just want you guys to, to think about that and what is it that you, makes you feel like you at a, at a war, right? Even a war within your mind and within yourself, yes, I have to get out of my way, yeah. And sometimes that's what it is too, Eldra, I like that you said that and that's being very open and I love that, you know, about that statement because that's right, sometimes we have to get out of our own way cuz sometimes the things in the, the earthly things that we're doing creates the battle, you see? So sometimes we gotta get out of our own way and try to open the path, right? By getting rid of some of the things that have clogged our way through to the By getting rid of some of the things that have clogged our way through to the same source, right? So therefore, that's, that's a good statement to say, and that's you realizing it, see? That you realizing it, that I'm, I'm stopping my own, you know what I'm saying, I'm blocking my own blessings. I'm blocking my own source to, I mean, connection to source, you know, maybe by doing this or continuously still not being able to let something go. Remember, it's always good to let something go to receive, okay? And a lot of times, I'm not saying in receiving abundance and prosperity, all that's fine and dandy. But we wanna be able to receive mercy and understanding, that's the key to life, you see? Cuz you already done things, right? That's where, that's, and you're gonna continue, it's life, right? But you wanna always have that connection with source and the most high, so you'll have that mercy and understanding over your life. So when you go to the most high, when you act like how I holler for them ancestors today, come and fix it. They said, ears up, okay, like, like how some, um, some of your animals be ears up, okay, yeah. They coming through for your girl. Yes, Eldra, you, I'm learning, I shay, and you know what, sis? That's the best thing, that's, that ain't number one, we all going through, we all learning, right? But that's, that's, that's a good thing, sis, and I love that you recognize that now, see how far we coming? Give yourself a pat on the back, I mean, I'm, I'm very happy that you're learning. You realize it, right? Cuz you got a lot of power, sis, you're a powerful being, that's what you should be speaking over your life. And say, ancestors, I know my power, I'm taking my power back. And all I ask is for mercy and forgiveness and understanding, and now I'm gonna walk in my divine light. Walk with me through that adversity, ancestors, all that you can do for, to help me get through, that's all you can do. And that's a part of learning, yeah, sometimes we are our own enemies, I shay. That's half the time, we our own enemies. Yeah, that's true. But being our own enemy, sometimes it's needed, family, for us to be able to realize. That we fighting against, you know, ourselves and how to shift that energy too, you know what I'm saying? Cuz think about it, if somebody was against you, you know, it would be that, oh, I'm gonna go against this person, da, 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 but if it's you. You know what I'm saying? That'll make you change things quicker, you know, so yeah. I love that, I love that, yes, ma'am, I'm thankful for it all, yes, yes, sis, yes. Okay, when you recognize it, you'll be able to take ownership and accountability and walk into your divine light, yes, Miss T, yes. And see, that's the thing, recognizing it, because sometimes, family, people don't recognize it. You know what I'm saying? That's the gist, sometimes people don't recognize it. Some people feel like it's always something outside of them, when in actuality, it's actually within you. Because you, everybody has that duality, it's about how you handle it, right? And if you recognize it, then you can fix it, but if you never recognize it, and you always blaming and pointing the finger to somebody else or something outside of you. Instead of reflecting on thyself, you'll never take accountability and be able to walk in your actual divine light. So that accountability comes with recognition and acceptance of you, that you're not all perfect. That you're not all angelic, okay? And that is okay to work with both sides of you, that's what I've always said, embrace the shadow, right? I've, I've made a deck about it, made a class about it, that's what I'm all about, right? Because that's how I learn me, you know, accepting me, that it ain't always gonna be, just like I just told y'all today, I knew I was going through a test, honey. Cuz I know the answers is gonna test me, let's see, let me see if she, what she, let me see if she really gonna do this thing, or she gonna go ahead, get out here, get, get acting crazy, right? Let Keisha come through, okay, instead of Kizaya, alright, let's see where her head at, right? But it's about standing ten toes down and recognizing, right? Recognizing, oh, she can come out, but only if you doing something destructive to me, physically, family, or my child, right? That's the only way I'mma turn back, but I'm, but I recognize it now. Nah, that's that negative energy, that's that energy trying to get your girl, right? So I want you guys, this is, this is for you to understand exactly what Miss T just wrote. Recognize it and be able to take accountability and ownership of it, right? Cuz it's gonna come, it's gonna come all with your ways, and it ain't gonna be easy, family, it ain't gonna be easy. It ain't easy, but recognize it, I love that, I love that, Miss T. I shay, right, yes, right, sis? Exactly, hey, T-Rose, hey, girl, yes. Um, I used to be like that, I was in denial, and ancestors was like, no, that's you, right, you know what I'm saying, I had to learn that too. I had to learn that too, you know what I'm saying? And I feel like a lot of people need to learn that, because a lot of people don't look at themselves like that, you know what I'm saying? And a lot of spiritualists don't look, look at themselves like that, they, they look at themselves as all being angelic, you know? Or, um, you know, they walk in their divine light, so there's nothing they can do wrong, that's a lie. And you know, if it's something that's coming at them, it's always something external, most of the time, it's internal. That's what people fail to realize, that's what Miss T said, recognize, I love that, and take accountability, because that's the main things people not gonna do, family. Just like you won't take accountability to do your shadow work by yourself, you definitely ain't gonna take responsibility of, you know, saying, oh, you know what? This may be happening because of something that I did, or this may be happening because, um, I, I put this out here, I put this type of energy out here. To go in this, on this, on this path, so therefore, I know it's gonna be, have some type of repercussions, you see what I'm saying? They don't wanna, they don't want that, you know, they don't wanna, they don't wanna, um, feed up to that, yeah. Right, it ain't all peaches and cr- I shay, it ain't, it, let me tell you something. On this spiritual journey, it ain't half of the time, over half of the time, seventy-five percent of the time, it ain't gonna be peaches and cream, family. Because it's the battle within. See, the battle is what you fight with in reference of mind, body, and soul, family. See, that's the battle, right? Mind, body, and soul, cuz as we stated, you are, that is the spiritual war, is your mind. Mind control is what they want, family, once they got your mind, they got you, keep trying to tell you that, tell y'all that all the time. Honey, I done been through some tests and battles, and now I can slay every one of them with my, boom, see what I'm saying? Get to that point, get to that point, you see what I'm saying? When you can get to that point, cuz you already know, boom. See, some of us still going through them, them battles and them challenges and them tests, and some of us don't know how to slam. You see, you gotta work up to that point, it don't come overnight either, family, you see what I'm saying? And I'mma tell you what, she ain't slaying them by herself, she got a whole crew of ancestors behind her, right? But that's from feeding that energy, that's from doing the work, right? Sitting in that shadow, sitting in that darkness and getting to that light now, whereas that light projects out. She know how to fight with that darkness as well, and so that's the thing. That's what I was trying to tell you guys, that I was, that I'm learning to do, right? And actually, it's working, you know what I'm saying? Because today, like I said, I was able to call on my ancestors, and within an hour, things change, family. But that's putting in that work, you see? Yeah, and knowing, see, I already knew what it was, and I knew which way to go. See, but you gotta recognize it, you gotta take accountability of it, you know what I'm saying, and you gotta step in that, you know, so that's, that's the thing. Ancestors trained me very well, yes, yes, training me very well as well, yes, because I slip and slide all the time, but I know it's me, right? Yes, yes, as long as you know, sis, as long as you recognize. And changes to say, yeah, cuz I slip and slide, I love that, sis, but you know what, this is our sacred space to always say. What we know we're doing wrong as well, because we ain't perfect, right? And so, some of us know that we gotta, we gotta start back, you know what I'm saying, it goes back, some of us gotta rewind. I think our morning message was about rejuvenation, some of us just need to rejuvenate, you know, like recharge, you know, get your mind right, right? Yeah, and it's okay to slip up sometimes, you know what I'm saying, we ain't perfect, we just humans living in this whole human experience. But we're spiritual beings as well, so we gotta put that in the mix as well, family, right? Had the power to make the changes I need to make, boom, that was our affirmation, you got it, sis, you got it, you got it. Right, yes, you got it, I have the power to make the change I need to make, yes, and that's exactly what I did today. I had, I knew I had the power to make the changes I needed to make, and I said, ancestors, help me make these challenges, help me fix it. Cuz I can fix this, and you can help me fix it, and boom, it was fixed, family. And you've been a great teacher and spiritual mother to us, and we are grateful, yes, definitely grateful, definitely grateful. Very grateful, yes, hey, Kristy? Yes, okay, and we have definitely learned a lot of lessons. We have definitely learned a lot of lessons, especially over the years, family, and all the things that we've been through. Um, and will continue to go through, and as a spiritual family, we have grown. Okay, so y'all pay attention to the things and what we have learned as well, and how we handle, you know, the adversities that have come. Against us as well, even as a spiritual family, you know what I'm saying? We've been through a lot, we've seen a lot, right? The challenges of what they've tried to do in reference of coming towards us as a spiritual family, and even death, right? R.P. our good sister Teresa, right, we will never forget her, you know? So, we've been through a lot and tested and stood ten toes down as a full unit and tribe. And continued, continuously vibing as a tribe and moving forward the way we're supposed to. Regardless of ascension tension and all the rest, right? And we're gonna continue to move that way, we just have a, a major, major, major angel here on earth. That is taking us through all the adversities and the things that we've been through, right, as a collective. And I definitely have to say, yes, okay, I have one of the best hand over hand teachers, honey, okay? That has walked me through so many things, and I'm so grateful, forever grateful. I thank the ancestors, I thank my ancestors, I thank all, all, all the universe in the most high. For Miss T and all my spiritual family, I give all praise and honor, you know, I give all praise and honor, yes, yes, yes. Alright, I missed a lot of what y'all said. Yes, I needed that one, yes, I'm glad, sis, I'm glad. Thank you all, family, you wonderful, Miss T, love you tremendously, yes, we love you back, we love you back. Yes, we still standing, we still standing, okay, I'm still standing with my Monica voice, okay, yes, family. I got on my Wu-Tang shirt today, family. Yes, Miss T don't know how many times I hear her words, yes, all the time. Family, in my sleep, okay, sometimes I can hear her voice, like, you better not, da, 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 or something, you know. Telling us something we needed to know, you know what I'm saying? I can hear her voice, you know, just as good as I can hear the ancestors, I can hear her voice sometimes telling me what I need to be doing, okay? So yes, family, we love you, boy, yes, 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 right? Give her that love, y'all, give her that love, that's why I definitely be like, you know what? Family. I be so grateful, family, I be so grateful, I be so grateful, especially to be able to, um. Tap into my spiritual gifts, family, and to get more grounded, okay? So, um, the main thing though, family, that I am missing is nature, I haven't been able to get out into my park, into nature. Uh, because it's been so rainy, it's been storming, it's, we ain't had no sun in a few days, family, it's starting to come down on me, you know, I like to be out in the sun. At least go to our little pool or whatever, you know, get out there and get, let that sun hit me, um, because that's, that's food to the soul, you know what I'm saying? So not being able to get out there, nature has bothered me, I started, um, doing more with my plants. You know, cuz that can get me a little bit more grounded, um, because you know, I got Medusa, that's my snake plant, she getting tall over there, I got her in my room now, family, right? Um, and you know what, she grew a little bit more since I brought her in my room, more closer to me. Uh, I know that sounds funny, but I love my plants like I love my children, okay? But, um, Medusa in here in the room with me now, and, um, my other plant that's named after my, um, my grandma. She's flourishing, so I've been doing more with my plants, you know, and I still have a couple of plants in my, um, spiritual space, in my other room, family. But I just had to pull back, family, because like I told, um, Miss T and the other spiritual family, like it's just, it's sometimes you just gotta just push back. You just gotta push back, cuz it be that spiritual work, when you doing a lot of spiritual readings and so forth, like I've been doing lately, family. It will, it will, it will tax you, like mentally, right? So that's why today, it's just like, I'm just happy to come in here and talk to y'all about spiritual battles and things that we go through. Um, especially on a spiritual journey. And things like that, you're gonna definitely be taxed, you're definitely gonna be hit by those evil forces coming at you. You just gotta know how to work through them, family, you know what I'm saying? Okay, so here we go, let's see, I gotta go back, cuz I missed a lot, okay, yes. I wish we could have a week long retreat, yes, family, whenever I hit the lottery. That's something that's gonna happen, okay, we're gonna do so, but we, we ain't gotta hit the lottery, ancestors gonna work it out, don't worry, right? Yes, okay, yes, essentially, it would be so powerful, yes, family, it would be so powerful. The storm has passed, and I'm outside right now sucking up nature, see, um, you know, ours, um, is coming, like, it's coming. So I'm still going through the whole motions of them telling us to get ready and stuff like that. But they mainly saying like it's weakening, so it may be like just flooding and a lot, a lot of rain and winds and stuff, Eldra. But that's another reason why I haven't been able to go to my favorite park and do my readings outside, because it's been storming, it's been no sun, like nothing. Um, we need to work on that retreat, we do, we do, we really truly do. We gotta look at the ladder, look at our dates and our times, cuz that's why I ain't did my pop-up shop, because I've been pushing stuff back, I just really. I gotta, we gotta figure that out, family, we really gotta figure out our linkups, I, we gotta, we gotta get that together, family, cuz we need it bad, okay? We've been talking about it forever, yes, the plant babies, yes, them is my babies, y'all know Medusa, honey, Medusa right there, honey, she, she growing, honey. I love Medusa, okay, I'm ready for whenever, I know, that's right, Texas is like, I've been waiting on that, okay, get it together, okay? Yes, me as well, I need to learn how to revive my money tree, it suffer in the moves, oh dang. Yeah, and the plants will get messed up when you move, cuz you know, that's a different environment, that's a different energy, that's a different, um. Uh, um, you know, air, cuz you move from like state to state, that's, that's a lot, you know? So really, what I'mma tell you about that is do some research, look it up, and see how you maybe can revive your plant. Um, as well as you might just have to, you know, start anew, you know, I've done that before too, so, I'm sorry, boo. Okay, yes, I be wore out at the hot topics, I was done, right, let me, let me say something, that's a lot of energy during hot topics. Cuz we be doing them back to back to back, at least when I do my readings, now I can like take a breather and a break, you know? So yeah, hot topics do be a lot, um, it's been cloudy and sunny back and forth all day, oh, it's not, not here, it's been rainy all day, all day. Y'all be safe, I was out of power for twenty-four hours, but we are safe, why, I'm not looking forward to that, but I'm prepared. I was just telling spiritual family today, I'm prepared, okay? Your girl is prepared, okay? And y'all know, I don't go, I don't, I don't, um, I don't go too far without my, my, my physical, uh, my physical, um. Protection and my spiritual protection, family, yes, I'm glad you're okay, and I'm glad y'all got your power back too, Eldra, I'm glad everything is good. Yes, I talked to her daily, she's gonna come back, I'll do the research, yes, yes, love, cuz it'll come back, your plants will come back. My goodness, thank goodness, your power has been restored, yes, Eldra, I'm glad the power was only out for twenty-four, now I'm hoping we don't have that, I'm hoping and. Got my fingers crossed, right? And I'll be at the altar tonight asking the ancestors to protect us, okay? And, um, refresh your soul and your plant to revive it, boom, there you go, AJ, that's, there, there you go, plant, plant mama right there as well, okay? Came on and moved to South Carolina, South Carolina is just having the, the big storm, did you get hit by that? Put it near the natural light, yeah. Yeah, cuz I know South Carolina had a bad one, had a bad storm. Um, AJ, I don't know, um, if you got mixed up in that, but I know down near Moncks Corner. And all of that, they, they had a whole Arby's, the whole thing flew, I know Charleston, them been flooded out. Um, all of that is bad down there, um, and it's coming up, so, um, yeah. I'm definitely, um, preparing, but I had already prepared, family, thankfully, I did, and I think it's going to Charleston, yeah. It already hit Charleston bad, Charleston underwater. It already hit Charleston bad, Charleston underwater. But, family, I told y'all, I used to stay in Charleston, I took the contract down there for almost like, uh, about eight, nine months. Honey, I was running from that damn place, cuz water was everywhere, and I don't do good with a whole lot of water. Cuz I had a premonition that it would be underwater, so I got the hell out of Dodge fast, I didn't stay on that contract, they said. Oh, and it was with the Navy down there, they said, you wanna stay down here? No, I don't, I was running back to North Carolina, I was out of there. No, too much water, yes, and they got all them bridges with the water, girl, I got out of there fast, real quick. Mm-hmm, yeah, prayers for them, mm-hmm, yes, I repotted my plants and they are doing well, good, Tantalus, I'm glad. You repotted, I forgot you did say you was gonna be trying to repot, I think I'ma have to repot, um, Medusa soon. Because that big old pot that I had her in, she almost grown out of there. And then the one in the living room that I got, that I named after my grandma, that is her, one of her favorite plants, the one that hang and run and run and run. She all the way on the floor too, I think I'ma have to replant her too, or I really wanted to get something to hang her. You know, like how my grandma used to hang her plants in the house and stuff, girl, my grandma had it looking like a forest in there. You know how old people deal with, uh, with, with plants back in the day, right? Yes, prayers up, yeah, mm-hmm, yes, underwater. So, yes, Texas is one of those states ancestors been talking about, yeah, Texas is. Yeah, Texas area. Texas had, uh, Texas had bad weather, but they always have bad weather, I think Texas just has some bad weather, yes. That's what I was thinking about, right there, you said it, you took the words out about with the asterisks, yeah. All those states with the asterisks on there from our ladder, mm-hmm, and North Carolina is one of them. Yeah, I already know. So, we know, and I'll be at the altar tonight, okay? Um, and I will be preparing, and family, you know, no fear, you know? Faith over here, right? They've been going through a lot, yes, they have, yes, they've been going through a lot, Texas has been going through a lot, Texas been getting hit worse than us. Definitely, but you know, we don't normally get a whole lot, you know what I'm saying? We get a lot in, um, our states closer to South Carolina and Georgia side. Um, but not too much, yeah, faith over fear, that's right, Eldra, mm-hmm, we are waiting on the storm, yes, we are. Yes, we are, yes, we are, right here with you, mm-hmm, but that's okay, cuz we got that faith over fear, mm-hmm. And then it'll wind up, you know, it, but we do have the coasts, you know, we got the coast, so. It'll probably be real bad out there, family, um, on the water, you know? Um, and where it lays kinda low here, it, um, it floods real, 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 real bad. It'll flood real, real bad, especially where I'm originally from, it'll flood real bad, cuz it kinda like sit low on, you know? So, but luckily, I'm not, you know, down there anymore, so. I go to bed, work tomorrow, oh, and after Friday, we are supposed to be off the rest of the month, so I'm ready, oh, that's good. So, you only got two days, that's good, sis, I'm happy for you. I'm happy for you, but family, I've had so much time on my hands, I ain't know what to do with myself. Other than, you know, I've been working my businesses and doing the readings, I have a plenty of personal reasons. Some of the times, like, like, let me see, Monday and last week, last week when I was, um. You know, that was my first week of being completely off, honey, I was so busy. I had forgotten even had a nine to five before, that's how busy I was, but see, the ancestors gonna work it out for, for me. And for everybody that, you know, taps in and references, working with your ancestors, everything is gonna work out, yeah. I'll be on my, um, working on my spiritual space, good, on your spiritual room, I say, I'm happy for you, yes, okay? I need to be in there cleaning my spiritual room, okay, because I got herbs everywhere, family, I mean, everywhere stacked up. I gotta, I gotta work it out in there, family, that's probably what I need to be doing, trying to fix up my space in there and clean it up, okay? Yes, I don't ever worry, right, I know, mm-hmm, sure, everything gonna be fine, yes, it is, you right, you right, you right, you know? You right, and family, I mean, it's like so many different things that, um, that I've been doing and accomplishing. Since I haven't been doing, you know, the contractual work and stuff like that, but I'm definitely gonna get back to it. I'm just, I don't know, I guess spirit is just letting me, allowing me time to do some things and stuff like that, so, yeah. Yeah, that's a nice little vacation, yes, it is, Tantalus, I'm happy for you, sis, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, family, I've been on here a full hour with you guys, fifty-five minutes rather. And we definitely was discussing spiritual warfare, spiritual battles. How to deal with things, gave you guys a couple of Psalms, right? I told you guys to get in some water, take your spiritual baths, wear your towels, man, right? Make sure you're wearing your towels, um, that's your crystals, charge your stuff, family, get out into the moon phases too, family. And get you some, um, nature, get, get out in nature, okay, that's another way to. Um, raise your vibration, um, yes, allowing you to get your bearings, yes, okay, yes, it definitely is. But you know what, I already told you, sis, you told me this a bunch of times in my readings, so. I definitely know, Ms. T too, you know what I'm saying, so I already know which way to go, and plus, I pull cards on myself as well, so. Um, I'm not worried, I'm not worried at all, like I said, this was the first time in a very long time that I was calm. I've been calm through a lot of storms lately, family, and that's a different thing for me, okay, so I know I've grown. So, um, I, I say all that to say and bring that to you guys, um, you know? In reference of what I'm going through, yeah, eight, eight, eight portal, family, release, family, yes, I say. And actually, family, if you wanna be real technical about it, they, they really are, um. That eight, eight portal that's coming, yeah, that is a good time to release, but the real true, um, portal is eight seventeen. Twenty twenty-four and eight twenty-six twenty twenty-four, those are the real Lion Gates portal. You know why, family? Because in the true Sederel and the verdict, that's when the actual sun will be in the Leo energy, okay? Now, you can get me all on a whole nother tangent about verdict and true Sederel. But that's probably why I see how Ms. T telling us to release during that time, she been telling us, don't mess with that eight, eight portal. That's why, cuz that eight, eight portal, this, the family, if I show you where the sun is, it's still in Cancer. That's cuz they don't wanna tell you the truth, they want you out of alignment, they want you out of alignment, they don't care about you being in alignment. You know what I'm saying? They want you out of alignment, they don't want you to know what's truly, if you look into the arm, just like Jupiter and everything else. Mars and Uranus is still in Taurus, family, I could show you, look. Look at all them signs that's still in Taurus, now, everything you look up will tell you it's in, um, Leo. I mean, it's in, um, Cancer, but they ain't. Um, let me look at, show y'all the sun right here on Cancer. Until it get the Leo, see, so, and let me just show you the time, mm-hmm, look at that. Look at where the sun sit, family, and look at the Cancer, I don't know if y'all can see it well. But if you look good and the time, that's on Cancer, family, you see that crab? Sorry, family, somebody terror coming through, you see that crab sitting there on that sun, you see that? That's still Cancer energy, family, and then you have Leo coming through on the seventeenth. That's when the real Leo energy comes through, that's when that portal, that's when that lion is, and the lions come through. On the seventeenth, family, that's when that, when it'll be on that lion right there, it'll be on that lion, that, it ain't made it there yet. You see the sun sit under there, see, in the sky, this what's in the sky, family. If you go out and look in the telescope, you ain't gonna see no, no sun near no, um, no Leo right now, eight, eight. That's just to put you in there, to make you feel that, but by the time the eight, eight portal come, that's when they gonna be doing their stuff. Yeah, I have to, because baby, the way they, I would have went out of control, yes. Well, we already know that seventeen is us, boom, yah! See what I'm saying? And that's why they ain't listen to me, you see what I'm saying? The true Sederel, I'm telling y'all, I'm telling y'all, Ms. T be teaching it, she be teaching it, but y'all don't be listening. Y'all be going with that Western, but you gotta remember, the Western wants you out of alignment anyway. Duh, we are the sun beings, the, the virtual, uh, the virtual power, right? That's right, that's why I keep trying to tell y'all, y'all don't wanna listen to me. Telling you, the true Sederel is the cosmos, what she say about the sun, the moon, and you are the star creation. That's what it is, family, that's the true Sederel, and the true Leo sun will be on the seventeenth of August. Which is another eight, okay, and just like she said, is the, is us, right? Of how she teach us, seventeen, eight, yes, okay, so, that's your real portal, okay? So, if you wanna be doing some things, that's what you should be doing in the round, that one, not the eight, that's why everybody confused. See what I'm saying? See how they confuse people, they confusing. And, um, so that's what I'ma leave you with, and I'm glad she clarified it, boom, right there for y'all, okay? Exactly. Yes, it is. Woo, that's my mama birthday, wow, no wonder you're a power bomb. No wonder you're a powerful being, Eldra, cuz you came from that lioness, okay? I say, I say, mama, yeah, that's awesome. But my son's is the nineteenth, so I'll be celebrating my lion two days after the, um. After the portal opens up, but he is a true Leo, um, just like Tantalus, hers is on the twentieth, so they come right, it's behind each. I think, I think it's on the twenty or twenty-first, something like that, but yeah, so my son's on the nineteenth, so. You know, we will be celebrating, you know, um. Yeah, yeah, day before you, yeah, I knew it, yeah, okay, I knew you, that's right, your baby and my baby, your same day, the nineteenth, yeah. Cuz Sha's birthday is on the nineteenth, and Tantalus is the day before, yeah. The others, my other son is yesterday, oh, the sixth, happy birthday, happy birthday to him, oh, you got two, um, in August, wow. Yes, well, I'm, y'all know, y'all know I only got one. But yeah, his birthday on the nineteenth, honey, so we will be celebrating that lion, honey, we will be celebrating that lion. I don't even know what he, um, wanna do, because we were supposed to do something, but he worked so much, family, he don't even, he don't even be caring. For real, okay, my son works so much, he's such a good kid, I can't complain, you know, I'm very grateful and happy for him. Um, to be so focused in life right now, cuz it could be another way, you know? Yes, happy belated birthday, yes, happy birthday, yes, family, giving it up. Number three, mm, okay, some of those Virgos, actually Leos too, yes, they are. You better speak, hmm, and, and that's what I'm telling you, family, the shift of that energy. Because see, the Western is the foolery, see? Just as Ms. T always tells us about how to, you know, the whole story of the Zodiac, of course, they gonna push that, they change it up for y'all. So, y'all won't know who you truly are, just like they told me, I was Cancer all my life, and I've been a Gemini, and it's all in my chart, okay? You're on my soul, how can you go against that, you know what I'm saying? And I resonate so much more with that sign, it just makes all the sense, you can't go against numerology, family, okay? And your birthright, there's no way to go against it, but you don't know that, because you, you don't know yourself, you know, in reference of knowing that. Yes, and I'm the lioness, I say, Ms. T got family of lions, yes, the family of lions, okay? And the other, oh, the other tip, wow, good gracious, that is, a whole family of. Honey, you over there with a whole lion's den for real, okay, for sure, okay? They lining it up and how they want, not how it is, right, that's right, that's right, that's right, Tantalus. They lining it up the way they want it to be, they don't want you to be in alignment, so they gonna tell you who you aren't, you see what I'm saying? So, you never be in alignment, you'll never be in alignment, you thinking you something else. Happy belated birthday, yes, yes, it's about knowing your power, that's right, and they don't know, yeah, thinking they somebody else, right? Okay, family, well, I'mma finish eating my, um, I mean, drinking my smoothie that's almost gone, and then I'mma, um, go make me a salad. And I'm gonna rest for the rest of the night, I don't think I'm doing no more readings today, family, but I will be on it tomorrow, I will be on it tomorrow. What's tomorrow, Thursday, Jupiter Day, I'mma be on it tomorrow, family, and I'mma be getting myself together. For our rituals, so my spiritual family that's on here, that's doing the ritual with us, eat light, get your energy right, and be ready. And pay attention to Ms. T page for any updates or whatever she might need to do, alright? Alright, I love you guys, I hope this gave you some, um, sorry for the chit chat at the end, but you guys know, I was basically chit chatting and talking. And I gave y'all some aspects and references of spiritual warfare, spiritual blockages, and fighting through tests, um, that you'll come up against. Love you too, love you too, um, yes, I'm glad you liked it, Ms. T, you know, so, I just be trying to push the family. And let the family know about the things that I go through, life experiences, it's the best teacher of them all. So, when I go through stuff, I lay here and I meditate, and I let the ancestors give me the next message and the next lesson, alright? And I love you guys through the blessings, I say, I see you guys, peace, peace, family, peace.